Good evening and welcome to the City of Adrian Commission Meeting for August 5th, 2024. Would everyone please rise? For a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath. President, Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present with the exception of Mayor Heath. Mayor Heath is not able to attend tonight's meeting. May I have a motion to excuse her?
So moved.
Support.
So moved from Commissioner Castleberry, a second from Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please. Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Motion carried. At this time, we will have public comment on items on the agenda. We will start with inside the chambers and then move to Zoom participants. You will have three minutes as shown on the screen. Please state your name and place of residence. And we can begin now if there's anyone that would like to comment on items only on the agenda. Seeing none from inside the chambers, we will move to Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, we will move on to our work-study session and I hand it over to our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First item tonight is an update on our My Neighborhood grant that we received from MISHDA. Our Economic Development Coroner Jay Marx is going to do that. I would note that there is also a public hearing regarding this grant, which is required by the process later in the agenda. So we're doing an update now to kind of give everybody an idea where we're at. And if anybody has comments later, there'll be an opportunity under public hearings to do that. And Jay, if you have it, maybe you could read the public notice too when you get done with your update so that people hear what that's about.
Sure. Good evening. Thanks, everyone. We are right now in the paperwork phase of our application with MISHDA for the CDBG dollars, Community Block Development Grant Dollars. We have two parts to this. We have a $400,000 grant that will be going for single-family owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, and we have $75,000 which will go for placemaking. We have a, it's a lengthy application process. They hope to have all of this in this month. Give us the grant document by the middle of September so it can be signed and ready to go before the start of the state's fiscal year, which is October 1st. And then sometime after that, we will be receiving acknowledgement to move forward. We still have a lot of work to do at that point. We'll have to create an application, have to create a process to vet those applications, determine if they qualify. And so there'll be a group of people to do that process. Just as a reminder, the process will be for rehabilitation, single-family, $10,000. So any amount up to $10,000 and that is a total grant forgiven. No, no requirements with that. They can go up to $40,000. If it goes up to $40,000 for the repairs, they will put a lien on the house for five years. At the end of the five years, that lien's forgiven. If they sell the house prior to that five years, they have to repay the entire $40,000. So they basically to discourage people from fixing up the houses and flipping them. That's kind of the, you know, the high notes on there. I can read the document or answer any questions before if you would like.
If there's a death and it goes into an estate within that timeframe, would that repayment be triggered or not?
I don't know the specifics of that. My assumption is it would, it would still require repayment. Anytime the house is sold in that five years is my understanding, but I can, I can check on that for you.
That'd be great.
Okay, so the public hearing, the purpose is affording citizens an opportunity to examine and submit comments on the proposed application for the CDBG grant. The funds in the amount of 400,000 up to 40,000 per unit for repairs, rehabilitation of owner-occupied, single-family housing, which may include exterior rehabilitation, exterior rehabilitation with an interior component up to 25%. Energy efficiency, including roofs, storm doors, exterior windows, doors, window insulation, windows insulation, modification for modernization and efficiency purposes, or replacement of heating and cooling, ventilation systems, and water heater upgrades, exterior security lighting, appliance upgrades, electrical upgrades or replacement. Accessibility and visit ability, including handrails, zero-step entry ramps, and ADA kitchen, bedroom, bathrooms. The area selected for the program is primarily in, in the east and south areas of the city, areas generally bordered by Santa Heights Drive, north to Addison, Santa Heights Drive to the north, Addison to the east, Dawes Avenue to the south, and McKenzie to the west. All activities will be, will be upon completion will benefit low to moderate income households. No persons will be displaced as a result of the proposed activities. And in the unlikely event of the displacement may occur as a result of the project activities, the city will develop a displacement, displacement plan which shall include consultation, referral assistance with financial assistance options for the relocation activity. All of those are requirements of the federal program.
Excuse me, Jay?
Yes.
Are there any maximum income guidelines or anything like that?
There are. It's, it's, and I don't know what those are off the top of my head. They just released those last week to us, but it is income-based. So it's, it's that low to moderate income.
Thank you.
Can we get that confirmed, please?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks, Jay. So as noted, if anybody has any comments about the program, we will have an opportunity later in the agenda for that. And next on the work-study session is the vacant building ordinance. You recall, we talked about this briefly a couple of meetings back, but Christian Castleberry was not able to be with us at that meeting and has done some research on this topic and has thoughts that she would like to share. And we also want to move that discussion forward. So Kelly, you want to kick it off?
The local blight committee has been meeting and discussing ways to remediate blight in our community. And one of the ways that we've been talking about is to add a little bit to our vacant buildings ordinance. So I researched a couple of different states and how other communities utilize their vacant ordinance building. One difference I would like to discuss is in ours, we only, we register it and then we only inspect it one time. And as we know, some vacant buildings become blighted and become dangerous, as in the, the buildings downtown that we took down. They were kind of almost caving in and needed serious attention. And without looking into those properties, we won't know that. So if if a building is registered and no one looks into it for 10 years, say, we may not know what's happening inside of it. So I would like to require an annual inspection of vacant buildings and an annual registration of those buildings. One of the other things that I, our current ordinance requires maintenance, et cetera. I'd like to require liability insurance for those structures as well. Recently, vacant building on the east side of town. In the last about six years, there's been 27 calls for police or fire to that building. And it was recently, the doors were kicked in by our local drug, the state drug unit. And that caused, that kind of caused some concern for me. And that's how I started digging into this. That was a vacant building that wasn't being monitored. And it has had a significant number of police and fire calls to it. So one of the things I would like to do is an annual inspection to make sure that people are maintaining those buildings. I would like to add a little bit to maybe what it means to be vacant and how long a property can be vacant before it's registered. Just kind of redefine that or better define that. And discuss what our registration fee should be. Right now, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, it is based on how long before they register it? Is that correct?
It escalates currently based on the number of years it's been vacant. And I can't quote off the top of my head what the numbers are, but it escalates from a few hundred at the beginning to, I think upwards of 1,000 after three years.
Okay. So maybe change the registration fee to be something specific at registration to encourage people to register their, their building and get it inspected. Some, some other municipalities, like it was 400 a year, 500 a year. I was recently in Waukegan, Illinois, and I've been there multiple times. And it was really nice to see the upgrades to that community. They charge $250 every six months. I think that would put a strain on our, our city employees to, to try to maintain those every six months. But that's something that they're doing and it has really engaged that local community. Let's see. I talked about maintaining liability insurance for the property. I know that our local, or right now, our current vacant building property requires people to register. And then they have to have a person within 30 mi, living within 30 miles of the city be the contact for that property. I would like to narrow down a little bit how, what that looks like too, and be sure that it's not a business registering that property, that we have someone that we can contact that is registering that property. I know that we have a lot of people outside the city, even outside the state, that own property in our community. And I want to make sure that we have the appropriate way to communicate or contact them. So just identifying a better way to maintain the responsible parties of the empty buildings. Looking at other ordinances too, there was there. If you have a, they mandated plans. So if you have a vacant building, a lot of communities mandate a plan of what you're going to do with that building so that it's not sitting for years and years and years. So we know that there's quite a few buildings in our community that are boarded up and have been sitting there same owner for quite a few years. And this requires that they have a plan of how they're going to maintain the building, bring business into the building, potentially tear the building down. It, it, I would like to require a plan of what they're going to do with the building rather than something just sitting there for years and years. A plan can take you know, a long time right now to have construction things done. So I, I respect, I respect that. But I, I don't think it fair that we leave boarded up buildings in people's backyard for years and years. That doesn't seem fair or responsible to me. So those are some of the ideas I had. Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Gauss have been in those meetings. I know that we've done a lot of discussion about blight and what I heard back from the community was they want us to look at these empty buildings and commercial blight and things like that. So I did, I did do some deep diving into vacant buildings and think we could, we have room to fix our ordinance.
Couple other things we talked about at Blight Committee, the idea that for certain buildings, for certain commercial buildings, the first floor being vacant, you know, probably should constitute being vacant, particularly downtown buildings. Less concerned about the upper floors, if, in a downtown setting, if the first floor is occupied. But if the first floor is vacant, then connected to that, you know, we did a demonstration project a couple of years ago with the buildings that we owned, which we ultimately did tear down for a window treatment in there that created a sort of a full storefront to make it more attractive from the street as pedestrians pass by. I think that was quite inexpensive and I, I think pretty effective for those buildings as long as it was up there. And emphasizing your point about the deterioration over time, you know, we became the owner of those buildings after they'd been vacant for some period of time, years, and you know, no one had been in them for quite a period of time. And when we became the owner, we found that through stormwater infiltration, all the wood in the buildings was ruined. It was all rotten. And that was why they had to be torn down. And so if, if we're doing an interior inspection on a periodic basis, then maybe that can be avoided and that kind of damage prevented because we don't want to lose the history of our community if we don't need to. Couple more things to think about. Yeah, go ahead.
Question. So if you're saying the first floor is vacant, if the second and third floor had rental properties, that would be exempt from this because it would fall under the rental rules?
The rental property inspection would only inspect those units.
Okay.
And so particularly if you want to do something downtown with window treatments, then probably the first floor being vacant should trigger an amended version of this ordinance.
Or the first floor only, it wouldn't go into those other areas, correct?
What I'm suggesting is that, you know, in that setting and like a downtown setting, the first floor being vacant is of greater concern. A lot of businesses don't have you know, occupancy as such above them in the upper floors and have aspiration someday to have residential up there, but that may not be immediate. I don't think that's of such concern if the first floor is occupied. I think the concern comes in, in a downtown setting when the first floor is vacant.
Commissioner Banky, right, as it stands in section 10 dash 403, buildings that are exempt from vacant building articles are properties currently registered as rental properties. So if those properties are registered as rental properties, they would be exempt from the vacant building.
Yeah, that, that's why I was questioning because that was conflicting.
So unless we change it, that is how it stands.
Right. So I think if you were going to go that path, you'd have to change that language somewhat.
Downstairs, are downstairs, the downstairs part of downtown buildings is not rental property as in living space?
Residential is not allowed on the ground or downtown.
So they would be able to fall under vacant building and not?
So Rice and Barley, for example, is that vacant for a long time? So that, would that have triggered that for the entire property there? Or if that was, fell into that time or only for that specific, specific space?
Well, currently it would not trigger it. I mean, a consideration you were suggesting.
When it was vacant.
Yeah, I mean, if it if you're using that as an example of how this might work, then yes, when that went vacant, even though the upstairs was occupied that whole time, you might have wanted to require a, a window treatment there and inspection inside to make sure that that space remained viable while it was being marketed.
Okay. If I can have another question?
Sure.
So 10, 404, Commissioner Castleberry talked about that 30-mile paragraph three, that 30-mile limit. And that, that's kind of concerning for me because what you described, I think is spot on. What's written here is of concern. I'll use the example of, you know, when my father passed away, he lived four hours away. I was the person who was responsible for the care and control of his house that was vacant. There were local neighbors that if an inspection needed to take place at an emergency or something like that, that could open the door and let someone in. So I struggle with that, that, you know, there's not someone in certain circumstances that, that lives far away. And more importantly, I'm concerned about the state instances where you are, you have the passing of an individual. We have the inception of the point-of-sale ordinance. So now all these upgrades need to take place. And then you're trying to bring these upgrades on, trying to find your contractor while you're trying to close an estate. And how long do we have before that triggers?
So there are concessions allowed in vacant buildings. If you are actively trying to sell it, things like that, or if you are, we can allow for concessions in this if it's an estate and it's something that you're taking care of immediately. I, I know that you even four hours away took care of that property fairly quickly. And so I wouldn't declare that a vacant building that needed registration and inspection because you were actively working to, you were actively working to move everything out and sell that property. I'm talking about buildings that just kind of sit vacant. And everything I read, every other ordinance I read, there were concessions made for people doing something similar. You know, if there's a plan to move someone in pretty quickly or, or move your things out and sell the property, that wouldn't be considered a vacant building. That's not something you're leaving sitting. And so there can be concessions for that.
And I'm correct that this is our current one, not, there's no markup or redlining of any suggested changes in?
Yeah, this is, this is current. I, I just, and the things I said are some ideas that I have looked up just to add a little teeth to it in the terms of these vacant buildings that have been sitting for years and years. I know, or homes, I know someone in the, in the chambers has, has mentioned the dog being in an empty house near her home that's just been sitting empty. We've seen, you know, law enforcement have to go into empty buildings, buildings where alarms are going off and they're empty because nobody's maintaining the property, things like that. And it causes a, they cause safety issues in our community. So getting in there and being able to see annually that there's, you know, what damages there, et cetera, I think is, is going to be important, a safety issue for our community.
If those could, could be addressed in your work, that'd be appreciated.
What's that?
The, the two areas that I brought up in terms of the estate and the vacancy and having a specific timeline and clear, a clear pathway for how you become an exemption to that. And then the 30-mile or responsible care. And it could be just a local individual that, you know, can open the building compared to what's defined as responsible.
So you're asking, and you're asking for a stronger definition of the individual that must live within 30 miles?
I mean, asking for a weaker version of that.
It could be a neighbor.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So responsible for the care and control of the property
Okay.
is a lot different than someone that could let the building inspector in.
Comment practice is a real estate agent. For instance, will have the ability to show you a, a space and it's part of their job and easy to connect with them. And I think that's one of the options.
The intent of this is to target continually vacant buildings. In our discussions, we, we talked about contingency for things that have special circumstances, whether that be it goes into the estate and the estate's being disputed amongst siblings or whomever the heirs were, that, that doesn't count under this. It's, we're talking about people that have owned buildings that just let them go to waste, that neighborhoods that are suffering and neighbors are suffering because they live next to a vacant building for six years and there's been no improvements.
And no plans, if I can interject, and no plans at all.
Yes.
That's the, that's the, the most important part of this, I think.
Yeah. And like, like we're in the discussion stage. We're not ready to bring a final proposal to anyone. We're still team building, getting opinions, getting ideas. So that's why we wanted to bring it on today, so that people could have a voice about this.
I would go so far to say even bank-owned properties should be registered because sometimes those sit vacant. So if, if a property has gone back to the bank and the bank is not, does not have an active plan and it's just sitting there, I think it should be registered. I know that Fannie Mae or, I'm, Fannie Mae and Frankie, what is it? Freddie Mac, thank you. They do not have to pay for registration, but other banks do. That was a, I think Chicago was sued back in 2017 for that. So those two entities do not have to pay, but other banks do have to pay to register.
What about the land bank, the county land bank? They own properties in the city too.
Our current
I didn't.
Building does, says that they do not have.
They do not.
And this isn't just residential. We're talking about all vacancies in the City of Adrian, commercial, everything.
I would like to see a property registered within 30 days if, if they, if they know it's going to be vacant for a very long time. And when we say register it, you can have a plan, but you have to tell us that it's going to be vacant for, and we're doing this A, B, C, and it's going to take us basically this, you know, I know construction, we can say it takes six months and then it really takes a year, but we can have a guesstimate of what it's going to take and things like that. So registering that I think a valid contact, just for law enforcement and fire, should they come upon a building and there's not a valid contact beyond an LLC is important. And I think we need to discuss what happens if someone doesn't comply with our vacant building ordinance.
Just to step in here for a second, because I was part of the discussions that they, the blight discussions that have been taking place. And I understand the, the special circumstances with states and that kind of stuff. But regardless of the circumstances, we want to make sure that the exterior of the building, there's not trash piling up, there's the, the grass is mowed, the weeds are gone. That regardless of what the circumstances are, I think we need to make sure that we're taking care of that or the, whoever the property owner is at the time is taking care of that.
That's, that is, that is currently in the ordinance that the outside, it has to be maintained, but making sure that that is maintained and we're not sending code violations to that home or that building. And they're not being answered because we don't know where to send it to the owner.
No, I think, I, I believe that you are on the right path for beefing this ordinance up and/or changing it. And I would encourage, you know, a rough draft of the changes.
So staff can work on that and bring it back to you for further discussion. I took some notes here your ideas tonight. So we'll try to move that forward if that's your desire. Moving on. Some of you will recall, we used to have Spanish language translation up on the screens here. And well, our communications and marketing coordinator was off on medical leave. That subscription expired. And so before we spend the money to renew it, we wanted to check in with you all and see if that is something you want to continue. The price is not insignificant. So I'm going to have Michelle talk about the particulars of that if she would.
Sure. So I reached out to Wordly, which is the company that we used for that. And the proposal for another year would be $8,100 and that's giving us a 20% discount.
Could you tell us, like, do you have any idea of how many people logged online that were using the translation service? Is that even, I, I think that was an option, wasn't it?
Yes. So I did pull the report. The most that were ever online at one time was three.
Yes. So I did pull the report. Um, the most that were ever online at one time was three. The average was two, one or two.
Michelle, oh, I'm sorry. Michelle, what alternatives might we have if we don't renew the contract that, or it was in place?
Sure. So the meetings are recorded, um, and they're uploaded to YouTube. On YouTube, you can um, turn on the closed captioning and you can choose your language. So if someone wanted to watch those meetings in basically any other language um, after they're recorded, they can. So if you didn't renew the wordly, what you're losing is the live translation. There's still translation of the meetings after.
An issue I have with that is then how can they be active in the meeting itself? If they're not able to get it translated for them so that they can understand and perhaps someone, I mean, they just can't respond to anything while the meeting is going on in any of the public comments if we're asking them to watch it at a later date.
That, that would be true. I, I'm not sure, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but the software worked such that you could respond and have your response translated. It was only passive. The, it was translating what we were saying so you could read it. But I don't think you had the ability to respond and be interpreted.
There was an option for chat. So I think if someone was online and they entered a chat, I could translate it back to English if it was in Spanish. Um, but it wouldn't be audio. So Wordly will translate um, audio as well. So they can actually hear it in Spanish, but it wouldn't work the other way for us here in the chambers.
I could make a couple suggestions. Um, LEED, which is the Latino advocacy group here in um, Lenoy County, has a, a board meeting tomorrow night and has a membership meeting next week. Uh, the Chico's Cinco de Mayo um, nonprofit has a meeting coming up uh, next week as well. And uh, Ola, which is founded by Ben Nogran, um, and does uh, Spanish translation for residents uh, in the city of Adrian, um, is readily available um, to speak about the, the inputs uh, here with this. And I would think that um, instead of having English speakers discuss this, it may be better to have Spanish speakers provide input on uh, that front. I do know that the feedback I've received from the um, translation software is that um, you know, as with all Google Translate or, you know, insert product name here, that it does um, a fair job, but when it's bad, it goes real bad in terms of translations and uh, the meaning. So that's uh, something to consider in terms of that. And is documentation more important? The other pushback that I received uh, when I talked about this with some um, Spanish speakers was that when Eagle hosted the um, public forum related to Crimson Holdings, that there was a room secured in the library for English downstairs and um, the conference room for Spanish speakers, the smaller conference room. And surprisingly, because of the openness that Eagle had in terms of um, translation and communication in Spanish to begin with, and having uh, professional staff there that was doing the translation, we had more Spanish speakers at the public hearing in person at the library in the small conference room than we had in the large English speaking room downstairs. Um, so when there's welcomeness and openness, um, it does bring the Spanish speakers out to be engaged and be involved as part of their community.
So we're seeking direction from commissioners. Do we want to?
Yeah, I would say two things. One is, was the software beneficial to us given, given the price? I mean, the non-discounted price is ten thousand dollars a year. Uh, by contrast, I think our Zoom subscription, which is heavily utilized, as you see, is a thousand dollars a year. Uh, so is it worth it? Is that something we want to continue? And if we don't want to continue that, you know, is there something else that we want to do as an alternative to that? Or, you know, do we want to simply explore, commit to exploring alternatives to that? And, you know, go ahead and leave the software lapsed. I think that's the discussion.
I would like to see if there's something out there that they could actively participate in, that it just didn't speak it to them. But if they wanted to make a comment, somehow we could get that in a timely manner at that meeting. And I don't know if this service offers that. I don't know if there's any other out there that offer that. I think the cost to me for the translation is, I don't want to say irrelevant, but I think it's, I think it shouldn't be the primary thing that we're thinking about when we talk about reaching out to more people in the city. I, I, I think this is valuable, and I think that if we could make it a better, that would be best.
I agree with um, Commissioner Schwartz. I wonder if the um, if the poor uh, participation in the existing, or the one that we're talking about renewing, um, could be improved if we did a ju- better job of promoting it, making sure the Hispanic community and other Spanish speakers, um, you know, are aware that it's even available. I'm not sure how good a job we did in, in marketing or letting people know. Maybe we get greater participation, so.
And again, we're making a decision with no data from the Spanish speaking community. I think we should have some feedback from the Spanish speaking community to tell us, is this worthwhile?
I don't think we're making a decision. I think we're just talking about ideas. And should we progress and move forward? We're not making a decision.
No, so I think that we should, as it been helpful.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to, to look at the options. I, I really don't know many of the other options. I mean, we might be nailed into one, only one option, and I think uh, we should explore. I think we should look at it. I think it's valuable. I think it's important to think about and talk about and do. Uh, but we, we should also look at some options, I think.
Michelle, how did we arrive at Wordly when we embarked on this uh, last year?
Yeah. So we reviewed several different software companies. Um, one of the key things with Wordly was the, the live translation. Um, and that it was also available via audio. Not a lot of software companies offer that. I can check into the two-way communication piece and see if that's something that they have that we can do. Um, there, there's, as Commissioner Banky mentioned, there, there's not a lot of, you know, translation software that, none of it's perfect. Um, this was, this was the closest I could find or the, the highest we, you know, I guess rated or the, that would be the best. Um, but that was a year ago. So we can definitely look around and see what else is out there. Now there might be something better.
I believe Mr. Nogron was involved in that. He was actively coming to the meetings at that time when we were discussing that and looking at him. And that was um, his input was, that was the best at that time. Um, and I know, I know that you did a lot of digging into multiple um, entities. So we did um, get some feedback when we first um, made the decision to utilize that program. But it, if, if it is not working and it is translating um, things inappropriately, we definitely probably need to take a look at that.
It is important to hear from our Hispanic community, um, whether they feel that this is something that's working for them or not. Um, but at the same time, we should be looking at other options just to see if there is something else out there. So I think we can be doing both at the same time. As uh, Greg stated, we're not making any decisions tonight. Um, so I think what we need to do now as commissioners is uh, hear from as many people as possible. And Michelle can do some research and we can talk about it again at a future meeting.
Anything more on that topic from anyone? Yeah, Mayor Protemo, turn the meeting back over to you.
Are there any other items for our work-study session?
Questions on budget? Do you want them now or would you like them uh, rebid under um, the consent agenda?
And the, and you're asking specifically about the uh, consent agenda budget or?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Elliot, when?
Well, we're going to talk about the consent agenda. Uh, we either can pull it off the consent agenda or we should do it now.
Yeah, that's my question. So uh, I don't think Nathan's online, so.
I.
We'll see if I can answer it, but uh, you can go ahead and ask.
Just the uh, the two hundred thousand dollars from community development. That's the um, money that was uh, set aside for um, the revolving loan fund for uh, improvements.
Uh, which page are you looking at?
I believe we set aside two hundred.
It was two fifty, so if it's two hundred, that's probably not it. We do get a.
No, it is two fifty. I'm sorry, I missed.
Okay.
Are you looking at a revenue item or an expenditure item?
Um, it was a. All right, I don't have, it's not saying the page number here. Under, yeah, total community development revenue. So it's a reduction of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Are you sure it's in this fiscal years? Budget?
Yep, the budget amendment's in red. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the budget amendment says. Or there's not a page number on there either.
What's your account number that you're looking at?
Um, it is twenty five hundred. Uh, so the last six are six, seven, six, one, zero, one.
What are the first three?
Uh, two, seven, five.
Two, seven, five. You got it?
No, I don't see two seventy five.
Oh, so really.
What expe- can you say the expenditure again you're talking about?
Uh, above it's the two fifty and then you got the two, the thirty and the two twenty.
What's the number on the budget you're ta- talking about?
Two, seven, five, and then uh, five zeros and then six, seven, six, one, oh, one, general fund, two hundred and fifty thousand.
I think he's, I think he's just reflecting the fact that it wasn't spent. I assume that's what that adjustment is.
Yeah. And then um, the, the next piece, um, DDA fundraising, um, that was short about eighty percent. So they budgeted fifty thousand and there was eleven thousand in fundraising. Uh, and I know there's the balance between us and the DDA, but the, how does that have an impact for programs or services?
Fortunately, we have our main street.
All right, good.
So it has no impact on the city budget and the gen- on the general fund. If we don't raise enough money, we offset it by not spending that money or using previous years' dollars for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? That's it?
Hey. Moving on, may I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Goss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Who is this for? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to the regular agenda. We have a special order one, which is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding a Michigan neighborhood grant. There is a three-minute time limit and we will begin inside the chambers. Please state your name and place of residence. I now call with my handy gavel here, this public hearing open. Are there any Zoom comments? Hearing no comments. I now call this public hearing closed. Resolution R twenty four dash zero three five from utilities. Resolution to approve amendments to the city's professional services contract. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So.
Support.
I have a resolution from Commissioner Goss with a second from Commissioner Miller. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Third discussion.
Oh, you're right. I apologize. My first time doing this. Yes. Um, and I even wrote that on here. Are there any commissioner comments?
I just wanted to point out that uh, although there was a withdrawal from uh, another contractor uh, related to uh, a, a different contract uh, aspect, spoke with um, or emailed with um, the city administrator and that this is not part of uh, the reason why that person backed out. So um, I vote yes.
And Commissioner.
Actually, don't have to start over.
Okay.
There are other.
Um, any other comments? And Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Resolution twenty four dash zero three six from the fire department. Resolution to approve the purchase of an ambulance. Are there any commissioner comments?
I, I just have a question. Um, what's the advance order time? I know that we have to order, my understanding is we have to order it now in preparation to getting it sometime in the future. How far out is that future?
Yeah, that's right. Uh, Chief Massengill is online and I'll, I'll let him answer. But uh, you know, the, this, for this fiscal year, the obligation would only be the down payment. And Chief, can you uh, give us the whole rundown on this?
Yep. So the um, current lead time is three years on an ambulance if we were to place the order today. Um, if we are able to get a demo unit, which are, the first one we bought from Braun was a demo unit. Uh, so we were able to get it right away. They do have some demo units in the line um, to be made. So if we can get our name and the deposit put to one of those, um, looks like the first one might be November of twenty twenty five. Um, if we can get our name put to, to one of those. So basically cut the delivery time in half.
And Chief, you previously spoke about uh, having uh, the interchangeable between the, the unit and then the, the back cab. Um, does this helps move that along where you're able in future um, cycles to keep the, the back part of the ambulance and then just purchase a new um, engine?
Yes. So it's uh, it's basically, they call it a re-chassis. So you take the box off of the chassis and put a new chassis underneath it. Um, so this would be in that same plan. Um, we would uh, probably be in line to buy one more full unit. And then after that, all of our units would be Braun. They'd all have the steel, or I'm sorry, aluminum boxes, all aluminum shelving inside, all aluminum, everything, the floors in them are composite. So at that point, we would do the re-chassis then after that.
Chief, sorry. Chief, one one more other question. Is this an additional ambulance or is this a replacement?
So initially, it was going to be a, when we first started talking about it, it was going to be a replacement. But with the call volume, I I'm leaning towards having to keep our fourth ambulance, keep a fourth ambulance as a backup. Because when one goes, even goes down for an oil change or has any mechanical mechanical issues, then we're down to two and two is not enough for the call volume that we're running. So with the call volume continuing to to be high and had increased over the last couple of years, I'm leaning towards keeping that one, the the oldest one we have, just strictly as a backup when one of the other ones goes down. We have, in the past, we have rented ambulances when we had issues with some. We've borrowed ambulances a lot, but with the 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 delivery times on ambulances, the ability to rent and and borrow ambulances is getting really tough if we can do it at all. So I'm I'm thinking now I'm leaning towards having the the fourth one as a backup of our own.
Thank you.
That was my question, too.
May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yeah.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Motion carried.
R 24-037 from police department.
We have a, Mayor Protem, we have a substitute resolution at your spot on the table that Chief passed out. And he'll explain for you what the change there was.
Good evening. Ben Summer, Chief of Police for the City of Adrian. Apologize for the mistake. That copy that I sent to you or I laid out before the beginning of the meeting has the amendment language added to the bottom. So when I proposed this resolution and submitted the memo, I did not have the resolution on the bottom. Finance Director Owen was kind enough to add that. However, the copy that I sent to Michelle was the original one without that language. So the memo, the resolution are still the same. The one in front of you just adds the account numbers at the bottom there.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments?
And in terms of body cam replacement, that's just a savings that we incurred to offset the cost of this? Or are we reducing the budget to body cam replacements?
There's no reduction, Commissioner. That's more or less a contingency for any cameras that we can't replace through warranty or restitution. And that is a carryover from last fiscal year. So that's that's a surplus that we have available to to make that purchase.
Even better. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Commissioners, there are several miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns with any of those? At this time, we will open it up for public comment. There is a three-minute time limit and we will begin inside the chambers and then move to online participants. Please state your name and place of residence. You are welcome to begin.
Carolyn Marr, Scott Street, Adrian. I thank the the city for supporting the Shakespeare in the Park, but I was also in the shocked audience on Saturday night when the announcement was made about the parking. Does everybody know about that? Okay, we need, I think.
We can discuss that during commissioner comment?
Thank you.
If you'd like. Are there any other public comments inside?
My name is Rose Williams and I live on North Main Street and I just have a question. I I live on North Main, so I use Broad Street and I see that there's been work, road work done. And there's a crease all the way down on both sides and I just wondered who approved that because I've never seen the road be retard and have that down the middle and right there at that thing where you go around. I don't know what you call that little island in the middle. There's grass growing out and they just put the lines on the road. So how is it that there's grass already coming through the tower and there's a crease all the way down on both sides? Who approved that? Because it doesn't look very professional. I'm a taxpayer and I could see you coming back in a few years and asking us to, you know, the road needs to be done again. So I just want to know who approved that.
Hi, Judith Hamerly. I live on Glendale Avenue in Adrian. I'd have thought about translation. As a psychologist, I'm required to have someone translate if I have a client who does not speak English. And I was thinking for the city, I don't know if there's that requirement or ethical concern, but if we paid $50 an hour to a resident who was bilingual and for 100 hours, we would only spend $5,000. So we might think about that as a possibility. The other thing is, I was thinking about, you know, the nosies on Facebook, the various nosy groups. They are now the city's ombuds people. When somebody has a question, they answer. And what I have found is that nature abhors a vacuum and so the answers get to be pretty crazy. I think it would be really good if the city had an ombuds person where you could actually contact someone and say, why is there such and such? And not have somebody saying, because, I'm dating myself, because the Russians are in the government. That wouldn't be the Russians now. But I think that would be a really good use of money and I I really think that because there are people who want to give answers, that we're getting answers that are detrimental to the city.
Hi, Jerick Tim, Adrian resident. This morning, for the first time in years, I've been addressing this commission. I felt truly heard by the city. Walking downtown, I saw the installation of concrete barriers and a ramp creating a safe walkway for pedestrians in front of the buildings the city tore down on South Main. Instead of seeing negligence causing a dangerous situation, I saw care and positive action providing equitable access to those walking. I would like to thank the commission and everyone that was involved in making this happen. Of course, as I walked through the new walkway, I noticed that the sidewalk across the street was being illegally fenced off in front of the Hammerman Building once again. Hopefully, we can get this fixed sooner rather than later. Another area that needs attention is Springbrook Avenue. Despite raising concerns about the dangers of this street's design, starting in July of last year, the street was recently restriped exactly the same as it was without implementing any of the needed safety measures. Before school starts, Springbrook Ave needs at least left turn, the left turn lane for the bus loop removed, missing crosswalk striped, and the street narrowed at the crossings. These changes are essential for a minimum level of safety. An action will result in another school year of excessive speeding and dangerous maneuvers, such as passing on both the right and the left that I saw on a daily basis while walking my son to school. Chief Emmerich can confirm the prevalence of this behavior as he saw it fit to send officers to calm the traffic during last school year. One officer told me that he lost track of the number of people driving over 30 miles per hour in the 15 mile per hour school zone during his first school drop off that he had worked. When these measures measures are deemed necessary to make people drive safely, there is a problem with the design of the street. I also employ that moving forward, city officials and department heads walk and bike every single street slated to be restriped or repaved at peak hours before the design plans are finalized to experience what it's like to be a vulnerable road user on these streets. This will help ensure all residents, regardless of their mode of transportation, are taken into consideration when our streets are designed. Thank you for adding the walkway around the construction. These improvements make our city more inclusive and accessible to all residents. Let's continue this momentum and make our city a place where every resident feels heard and valued. Thank you for your time.
Name is Trow. I live on Mommy Street. Don't worry, I'll watch my language this time. About a week and a half ago, I received this letter telling me that my sidewalk was damaged and that I had to replace it. I walk. I drive for a living, but when I'm home, I walk. I relax. Today, I delivered four loads to four different elementary schools. So in that time, I'm able to look at the sidewalks. I had a 12 inch by about a half inch. It's costing me, I don't know how much. I'll let you know after this weekend because I'm doing all the work myself. It aggravates me because my wife went up to City Hall to get the permit. Explain to me why it is complaint only. That's ridiculous. You got workers out there. I know you guys are hiring people. I'm actually qualified for one of the jobs you guys are hiring for, but if I take that job, I can't stand here. Because you're not going to listen to me, just like you don't listen to half these people that come in here. Change it. Get out and walk. I go on the west side and I walk and tell, I tell you what, everybody says stuff about the east side, there's a lot of damaged sidewalks over on the west side. I mean, really bad. Go down by Alexander. That was a bad area for me to drive through. And to see the sidewalks and know that somebody's kids are walking down through there. For an adult, a half or a quarter inch ain't nothing. For a small child, you know, that could be a trip to the emergency room. You guys have a good day.
Seeing no more in-person comments, are there any Zoom participants that would like to comment?
Ben Mormon, City of Adrian resident. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Ben.
All right, sorry, thank you. Apologies, Aaron and I are ill. I just wanted to reiterate the need for better translation services for our Spanish-speaking community. I think that it was a commendable thing to begin where we are, but we absolutely should look into other methods. I liked what Judith had to say about a translator, actual in-person one would be much preferred because I have six friends who are only Spanish-speaking and they have to rely solely on my honesty and attempts at translating through my phone app to be able to actually answer any questions they have with the city or any information that's given out pertaining to them. So just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comments, we will move on to commissioner comments. Are there any commissioners?
Mayor Protem, can can we have Chief Emmerich come up and address the question about the parking?
Oh, certainly.
Good evening. So the issue with parking arose, the lot directly across from the jail, kind of behind Subway there, that's owned by the county and usually the jail staff parks there. So for the performance in Trestle Park, there was a large crowd. There was not many places for them to park. People started filling up that lot. So when the county employees were coming out, you know, ending their night shift at the jail and trying to leave or day shift, whatever it was, trying to leave, they found a number of their vehicles were boxed in and they couldn't get out. So they called us. It's private property, so they could have just started calling tow trucks to try to get the cars moved that way. So we had one officer respond and she went down and spoke to the organizers behind the scenes, let them know what was going on. They made the decision to make the announcement. The officer had already left by the time the announcement was was going on. Now, I understand the reason they did that for the urgency because they were about to start towing vehicles, being that it was on private property, but no one, well, the people that parked there didn't know it. There is a sign that says county vehicles only. But maybe they didn't see it when they parked there. Maybe growing pains part of the program, but maybe we can do better next time posting that not to park there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Banky?
First and foremost, tomorrow's election day, so remember to hit the polls if you haven't done so already. And then coming up this Saturday from 12 to 4 is the Align Center Open House over across from Monument Park, our opportunity to throw things at Chief Emmerich and the Dunk Tank along with the mayor. And then also want to extend some congratulations to the chief in meeting with or planning to meet with some east side neighbors that recently had some concerns over crime with Neighborhood Watch or whatever they can do on that front. Shakespeare in the Park, I was there for the announcement on Sunday and as I left, I saw the sign. I mean, it made perfect sense that you want your jail staff to be able to come in and park and be able to leave. So maybe that's something that John can have someone stationed at that location, you know, on the the next go around, hopefully, to kind of control that. But like I said, growing pains, but other than that, it was a a great response. And then lastly, there was just one comment that I received from an individual that wanted to come to the meeting. He raised concerns that at the front of City Hall, there's directions on how to get into the building in his scooter to go around the back, but when he said he's been in front of this building multiple times and has never known how to get in. So if we could maybe consider some signage of how to access this from which through the back, that might encourage some ADA compliance participation as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the about the Shakespeare in the Park. It was a great weekend. We had very positive feedback. Lot of hard work by the actors, the directors. Commissioner Miller was involved in the scenery and and all of that. But what happened over the weekend with those performances could not have happened if not, if we had not had the support of the Parks and Recreation Department. Jeremiah Davies and his staff did a remarkable job for months working with the Shakespeare Committee to make sure A, Trestle Park had the repairs made, that it was clean, welcoming. It was a wonderful thing and it would not have happened without Jeremiah and the entire Parks Rec staff doing what they did to support the effort. So I just want to express my personal appreciation for that and the hard work that they did. They don't get enough recognition. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
I'd also like to address First Fridays that was, that happened on Friday, even throughout the rain. Unfortunately, our outside activities had to be canceled mainly because the vendors weren't weren't interested in having their equipment get wet and that's understandable. You don't want bands and equipment and putt putts and bounce houses in the rain. So just be looking forward to a good and hopefully rain-free September, First Fridays and hopefully our drive-in with our bike night will go as planned. May I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.